Local call. Commissioner Gouwin?
Present.
Commissioner Pizanha?
Here.
Commissioner Gouwin?
Here.
Commissioner Tetrel?
Present.
Commissioner Neese?
I'm here.
Mayor Mendez?
Present.
And we got notification for the record that Commissioner Mungia will not be at this meeting.
Thank you. Let's call the meeting to order. Today is May the 12th, 2020. Time is 5:04 PM.
I'll go ahead and read the call, Mayor. Notice of a special meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville teleconference open meeting pursuant to Chapter 551, Title V, Section 551.041 of the Texas Government Code, the Texas Opens Act. Notice is hereby given that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville will conduct a special meeting on Tuesday, May 12, 4:20 at 5:00 PM via WebEx teleconference meeting by logging on. Our meeting number is 969-728-362. This notice and meeting agenda were posted online at the City of Brownsville website. Any member wishing to participate in the meeting hosted through WebEx, they can also join with the following numbers that we have posted on our website. We can go ahead and begin with invocation.
We've had issues with the pastor with the editor who's unable to sign on, so Commissioner Tetrel want to give the invocation?
I will. Okay. Dear Lord, we pray to you today. We ask you for your wisdom, for your guidance, and for your protection for every citizen that resides in the city of Brownsville. We ask that you protect us from COVID-19. We ask that you spare us from any severely sick people. We ask that you pray for us always, and remember that we are good people who love you, Lord.
Next on the agenda, we have the public comment period. We did not have anyone sign up for public comments, so we'll go on to the first agenda items for items for individual consideration. Item number one, discussion regarding the City of Brownsville response to the urgent public necessity concerning COVID-19, otherwise known as coronavirus, including but not limited to continuity of staff in facilities and services, including actions and continuity to such operations, financial update, emergency procurement, and drive-through collections, testing site update.
Good afternoon, America, Commission members. As part of item May, for the organization, our update centers around our continued efforts to plan for the recovery. The BTX Recovers Committee now has four subcommittees, and those are, they fall under safety, communications, operations, facilities, and finance. They're having their first subcommittee meetings beginning this week. We won't have hard recommendations for next Tuesday, but we are planning for having more to share with the Commission for the June, the first meeting of June. So that is a committee composed of directors from multiple departments that are working with Office of Emergency Management, Public Health, Public Safety Staff on basically making recommendations for how we work back into the operating of our facilities overall and some of the essential operations. Also, we have developed a tracking tool for our financial impacts. It won't be available today as part of Lupus' financial update, but we do intend to introduce that to you all at the next Tuesday's regular meeting. So with that, we'll track revenues and expenditures and be able to reconcile some of our more significant costs and also where our revenues are on things like sales tax. And also, as we get more reimbursement funding, we'll be able to determine what is being offset on the cost side by some of that funding coming in from the outside. So overall, it'll spare you all having to go through the outlook that we provided back in March 16 that has a lot of heavy narrative, and you'll be able to look at one high-level spreadsheet that will give you all the information that you need. That's about all I have for item May. We'll be happy to answer any questions.
I have a couple of questions. Do you have like a percentage of the people who aren't actually working right now, or is everybody still working? Can you go into that a little bit?
Yes, sir. Everyone is still working. We've been able to repurpose our continuity plans, basically allow for the repurposing of most of our staff. 12% of our staff has been the constant number of those that have been doing telework, but within that percentage, and we can send you that pie chart, some of those are being rotated, and some of those are what we call hybrid. In other words, they may be in one week, out one week, teleworking, just to rotate staff around. That's really happening for a lot of our internal service departments like finance, HR, IT, things like that. But for the most part, all of our staff continues to support some type of essential operation, whether it's emergency management, or they have backfilled special projects in other areas. We don't have any staff that's, at this point, displaced.
That's great. That's good news. Have there been any grievances or any of that kind of stuff filed during this process, you know, revolving around COVID, or their working conditions or anything?
We, not necessarily from, we have some, I think, some feedback from our public safety, one of our public safety departments. The fire department had relayed some communication to us through the chief that we've been working through. And overall, it's being addressed, it's being handled within the stated grievance processes that we have. As you all know, we have collective bargaining, and those types of agreements have to be followed in cases like that. But outside of public safety, for the most part, we haven't heard anything else.
Thank you.
Mr. Benal, you stated that Lupi will have some, or the financial projections as far as sales tax revenue and other items next week, or did you say the first week of June? So yeah, the Recovery Committee will have their initial set of recommendations the first week of June. The tracking model will have an update next Tuesday. Okay. Yes. We know, for example, go ahead.
Is that something that wasn't available yet? Because that's kind of the purpose of having these meetings, is to get those kinds of updates.
Lup is going to provide an update right now on all of our costs to date. What that model does is it gives you a better forecasting versus just a real-time, up-to-date expenditure item. The revenue side, we've been tracking, but we hadn't put anything together outside of the financial outlook prior to to really follow on a month-to-month basis. We just received the numbers for March last week. We know those are down 9%. Lup will likely speak to that on item D. But in terms of connecting everything, that reimbursement money that comes in, for example, last night, we received notice from the Texas Division of Emergency Management of additional reimbursement for the state. So as those figures come in, we want to be able to reconcile it better versus just describing, here's our cost, here's our revenue, really tying it together and give you a better tracking system on a month-to-month basis. That could even be shared weekly, but really a lot of the more substantive changes should happen on a month-to-month basis. Any other questions?
Next, part of item one is the financial update, emergency procurement.
Good evening, Mayor. I would like to start by thanking you and for your continued support through this difficult time. The City of Brownsville, just like it has in the past, the City of Brownsville, just like it has in the past incidents, has once again established itself in being proactive and one of the first to act towards any incident. We'll be outlining some of the ways we are trying to provide the best care toward our citizens and recuperate as many of our expenditures during this fluid situation. Although our current circumstances are far different than any other incident in our past, we continue to pursue every angle possible to find reimbursement opportunities for our city. We established new practices with our immigrant influx, which we've implemented towards this pandemic. On the next slide, you will see our current reimbursement process that we are currently using to strategize as a whole community to obtain as much assistance as we can be provided through federal and state grants and programs. The reimbursement team has been working hard to ensure we apply for reimbursements through programs and grants available. The reimbursement team has created an accounting system that has assisted in tracking our total amount of $5.5 billion expensed as of May 1st. $5.2 million is attributed to personnel costs, of which $1.74 million is not part of the operating cost. Total expenses of $2.03 million are not part of the operating costs. We are working with city departments to gather all backup information for reimbursement requests based on funding source. In December of 2019, legislation signed into law an appropriation of $17.863 billion in the fiscal year 2020 to fund the FEMA Disaster Relief Fund. Any questions?
The total expenses that are not part of the operating budget at $2.03 million, is there a breakdown for those expenses? Typically, we get breakdowns for these expenses. I just don't see anything on here.
Yes, sir. So the $1.4 million is for the overtime that is not, that is not on the operating cost, and $300,000 is for the supplies and equipment leases and contracts.
Okay, is there more of an itemization or like, or better breakdown than than just those numbers?
We can go ahead and get you a breakdown of that.
Okay. The reason I'm asking is because at the prior meetings, we've had breakdowns in charts showing these expenses and how they're broken down. Also, how much have we spent thus far on the drive-through testing? Mayor, those costs will still be provided as part of Lupus' presentation, but Odie is, in reimbursement overview, since there were some questions last meeting, so she's going to walk you through what we're doing overall on the reimbursement side. Okay.
Actually, actually, I'm sorry about that. Actually, to be, that information was, is not going to be provided this time around. Kind of, we've kind of focused on this reimbursement process.
Noel, I have a question. What's driving the overtime cost here, just in general?
This includes, a lot of the hazard pay was being tracked as overtime. That needs to be manually adjusted out. That, that wasn't separated. So in terms of what I've asked Lup to do is making sure that how we're tracking hazard pay and overtime, that that is separated, that report is also being cleaned up as we speak.
So it could be less?
Correct. In terms of what's true overtime and what's actually hazard pay.
We go to the next slide, please. And the purpose of this slide is just to give a basis of how we've handled the previous incident. Most recent one was the immigrant influx. Activity on this started April of 2019 and concluded December 2019. We have the same strategy. We start, we set up the department expenditures in anticipation of having some type of reimbursement process. Not until July 1st did we get notice that there was funding going to be available through this. The funding got funded through the FEMA program, which was later funneled through the Emergency Food and Shelter Program. On this, on this Emergency Food and Shelter Program, they have different allowance for reimbursable expenses. On this particular granting source, full expenditures that we had documented was close to $400,000. The first phase of the award was that we had expenditures, which included the period of October, excuse me, January through June 30th. Request for reimbursement was opened up in September, and it was funded in the amount of $197,000. The second phase was opened up because of funding. Initially, there was $25 million allowed for this program. Funding was not depleted, so they opened a second phase for reimbursement. The open, it was opened up in the month of March, and we're pending the final, final amounts to be funded. The second part is about almost $200,000. So that late May is when we'll identify how much of that funding is going to get reimbursed. And again, it's just contingent on the availability of the funds that we had, and we feel that there, there'll be sufficient funds to cover this. Next slide, please.
So Mayor and Commission, just to kind of reset the purpose of what we're doing this, this particular update, your approach is a little bit different, and on the first slide there was an overview. What we're doing here is because of the questions we got last time, we're doing this update on the reimbursement side. We can send the drill down as we typically do on the Lupus' presentation, but what we did as a staff this past week is spend some time to show you all what we're doing today, how the most recent reimbursement experience went, and then where we are on funding that we've received and funding that we're pursuing. So that's where this particular update is centered, a bit more on the reimbursement.
Yes, good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Commissioners. This is Marina Salassee. Apologies, my camera's on, but it's not showing. I'll be covering the different funding sources in response to COVID-19, in addition to what Odie and Lupi had covered. This slide outlines different agencies that are providing COVID-19 opportunities. Some of the examples include the Department of Justice, which I'll go more into details, the Department of Transportation with FAA, FTA, U.S. Housing and Urban Development, U.S. Department of Commerce with EDA. Next slide, please. On this slide, we have received the following allocations or notification of allocations, and it's divided by the following agencies. We have U.S. Housing and Urban Development with a total of $2,416,936 in allocation funding for, and that's broken down between two programs, the Community Development Block Grant, which we know as CDBG, for over $1.5 million, and the Emergency Solutions Grant, known as ESG, for over $800,000. The next agency is the Department of Transportation with the funds for the Airport Relief Funds in the amount of over $1.8 million, and this is to help supplement loss of revenues for that, as well as the Federal Transit Administration for transit over $7.5 million for operational costs to maintain services and loss of revenues. And, and then for Texas Division of Emergency Management, and we, the letter was just sent out from the governor yesterday, it's dated yesterday regarding the announcement of the Coronavirus Relief Fund. So for the City of Brownsville, we are able to receive an immediate allocation once we're certified by the state of over $2 million, and the remaining balance out of the $10,209,375 will be on a reimbursement request basis. So that would be, the remaining would be up to eight, over $8.1 million. In addition to these allocations, there are other funding that has been secured, such as under fire with the Department of Health Human Services of $108,907 in relief fund payments. This is through an auto stimulus payment as a Medicare billing service. And then other funds are being leveraged through the Public Health Department. On this slide, this is the current applications that the team is working on. The first one you see listed is the Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Fund for a federal allocation of $110,433. We are working with the Office of Emergency Management, Finance, Fire, and Police for this application for funding will be to cover first responder technology and the remaining for EPD salary. And we're hoping to submit this before the end of this month. The next one is the local council of governments, the Lower Rio Grande Valley Development Council for the Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding Allocation. This is due mid-June, and so we're working with the Office of Emergency Management, Finance, Fire, and Police. This is not yet available until we submit the application for the first funding that was mentioned here on this listing. The next one's the Assistance to Firefighter Grant, and this particular one is specific to the supplemental coronavirus funding. This we, where, we'll be submitting by the end of this week with the fire department, and funding from this grant will go towards the purchase of EPE. The last one listed here is actually a technical assistance grant that has been submitted, and this is to produce economic and demographic research that would help highlight in our community, actually county-wide challenges that are specific to immigrant communities in response to emergency, emergencies such as this, as COVID. So we do have, we're anticipating to provide a positive announcement tomorrow regarding this opportunity. I'd like to also add that we're currently reviewing the NOFO that recently came out under the Department of Commerce for EDA, for CARES funding, and so we're currently working with the Planning Department on that. And so with that, I'm going to transition to Ramiro, who's going to cover the efforts on the legislative side.
Marina, before you go on, I do have a question. The, the grants that you mentioned, including the TDEM one and the other ones on that first slide, is there a deadline? My understanding is for the TDEM one, it's toward, it's the end of the year, am I correct? And it's retroactive as well? I don't see any qualifications or any specifications on there.
Yes, Mayor, you're correct. The TDEM one, as far as that 80% for reimbursements are for costs incurred between the periods of March 1st, 2020 through the end of December 30th, 2020.
And these other, are the, is that going to be contingent, the reimbursements of the $8,167,000, is that going to be contingent on availability of funding, like the one you just heard from Lupi on, the one that, the immigration one that we saw earlier? Is this TDEM one also going to be contingent on the availability of funds?
This TDEM one, they, the way they present the information is that they show that for Brownsville, they, they have set aside a total of $10,209,375. So they've already showed that set aside out of their overall funding, and 20% of that we can receive immediately upon submission of documentations and certification by the state.
The reason, the funding, the funding is a... And other items, we're spending on, on other items that weren't anticipated, so I just want to make sure that the spending that we're going through is, is, you're anticipating that that's going to be reimbursed to a certain extent. Otherwise, we need to make sure that we kind of, that's spending.
Mayor, the, to answer your question, I think the funding, at least the Title V funding, the Coronavirus Relief Fund, the $2 million is a direct allocation as soon as we, we provide some paperwork. The $8 million, like, like it's spelled out here, is, it's on an eight-point, it's 8.1 million is available, but we need to submit, we need to charge against that, basically. So we need to submit all our, all our information, and, and they'll be reviewing it before they release the money. But the two, the $2 million, the way it seems to work is just, you know, automatic as soon as we submit, you know, a certain amount of paperwork. But the funding is available. It's not one of these things that Congress still needs to approve. Congress already approved this. This was in the first CARE Act, and so that's what, that's what, that's what we qualify for. And, I mean, it's a little bit, a little bit tricky, but I think it, but to answer your question is, the funding is already available. It's there. We just need to submit for, for it.
Yeah, so you just need to show that the expenditures were necessary and were incurred with, due to the public health emergency with COVID.
And the eligible expenses for that, for that fund are, as follows, directly from the website, medical expenses, public health expenses, payroll expenses per public safety, public health, healthcare, human services, expenses of actions to facilitate compliance with COVID-19, expenses associated with the provision of economic support in connection with the COVID-19 public health emergency, and any other COVID-related expenses reasonably necessary to the function of government to satisfy the fund's eligibility criteria.
Yes, that's correct.
That does not fund lack of revenue. So that goes to the next. So I just wanted to clear up a little bit about Texas A&amp;M. We heard on, on the last meeting, I contacted the Vice Chancellor for Government Affairs, and so the confusion at the time was Texas A&amp;M does house TDEM, and they, they work out of Texas A&amp;M. And then the other thing is through, with this Title V funding, they've activated their AgriLife Extension and Engineering Extension Service to provide, to provide any assistance to communities that might need it, so that we can maximize the amount of funding that communities get back. I think this is more, you know, I think we might be able to use that, but I think this is more for, if you know anything about the AgriLife Extension, it's really about rural communities and trying to get them to tap into some of this funding. So that's, that's a little bit about Texas A&amp;M, and then on the, on the next slide, you know, other initiatives that we follow, obviously, we're signing on to, to all the letters that come out. We get daily updates from the U.S. Conference of Mayors. TML sends out some updates. I have a call, we have a call with TML this week. You know, U.S. Conference of Mayors just sent a, a notice, the, the House of Representatives has, has submitted a bill for $187 million, $187 billion, and this, this bill would provide, it's called the HEROES Act. This is emergency fiscal assistance, so this is more targeted to funding gap, gaps in revenue to cities. And so, you know, we'll, we'll continue and closely follow that, that bill to see where it ends up. Obviously, this is on the House side. There is some resistance to support cities on the Senate side, and so we'll, we'll continue to monitor and see what we can do. And obviously, we're, we have to, you know, craft a new legislative agenda for the upcoming session in January, and obviously, we think COVID will be a big topic. And also, you know, this, there's going to have to be, we're going to have, the cities will have to play a big defensive role once again against the state wanting to, you know, take control of everything and leave the cities and counties powerless. So there will, that will continue this session. So with that, that is, that is my report on that side.
Mayor and Commission members, just to add some additional financial information, in a week's time from the last update that y'all received last Tuesday, there wasn't anything substantive that changed on the expenditure side. However, as you can see through the reimbursement information, there were more notable changes on the reimbursement side, particularly the TDEM. That's a, that's a huge chunk of funding, and how we intend to use it strategically is similar to how we're using the FIA and FTA, is trying to basically find operating costs that we could have qualified for reimbursement so that we offset any potential revenue declines. For sales tax, we're down 9% for the month of March, but year-to-date, we're still up 3% because we had a good first six months of the year. That's what the tracking tool will do next Tuesday, and put this together with the total expenditures, with the updated revenues, in one single spreadsheet that ties it all together. But we wanted to give you the update and answer questions on the reimbursement side, highlight some of the significant sources of funding that we have received, and then tie that back to expenditures that we've incurred and where we're, what we're predicting between now and the end of this week. How much have we spent on the drive-through testing, Ben? Because that wasn't presented, and it has been, Lup said he wasn't going to present it specifically, so do you have that number? Does somebody have that number? Or do we have it as part of the next presentation for the drive-through?
I do not, sir. Based on, based on last, this is Lupi, based on last presentation, we spent about, about $130,080, $46,000 medical costs associated with medical personnel and about $87,000 in testing kits for non-insured.
So the grand total, Lupi, I'm sorry, $120 something?
$130, about $130, $133,000.
That was as of last week, though?
Yes, sir, that's the last week.
That's the number I remember.
That's the number I remember as well.
We could update the numbers from last week and send it out tomorrow to give you that update as well.
Yeah, I think it's important to get that. I don't know why it wasn't presented or why it's not being presented this time. It's been presented at every other meeting, so I do expect that to be presented. We're going to be meeting to get updates like this outside of our regular scheduled meetings, and I think it's important to have that.
And we can add, we can add, we can say, we'll send it out tomorrow because it wasn't shared during the meeting and make sure we add it also. The intent was to focus on the reimbursement, but we didn't mean to not share any other information that is relative to financial updates.
Honorable Mayor, Commissioners, good evening. I wanted to give an update of Public Health Department specifically on the COVID-19 drive-through testing site. Our running totals as of May 11th, 2020, thus far, we've had 1,941 tests administered. Of those, 1,960 did not meet criteria. Our running total for insured to uninsured is 53.5% insured to 46.5 uninsured. We have reported 114 positive cases to Cameron County and 1,781 negative results thus far. As of today, we have 49 results pending specifically for this, for yesterday. We have, we're at day 34 as of yesterday for the COVID drive-through. Yesterday, we did have 39 individuals present, 15 insured, 24 uninsured. And for Harlingen, yesterday, we had two patients come through, two insured, zero uninsured. We have not reported any positives through the COVID-19 drive-through for Harlingen and seven negatives. Thus far to date, we've had 21 individuals tested representing Harlingen, and we've got 14 samples pending for Harlingen. And this would be day six for Harlingen drive-through totals. Next, next slide. I also want to add, we continue using the swab only, and we have not gone back to Sputum since we converted. Ms. Jones will now present on our cumulative case and estimated recoveries. And for new to this, we're also going to be adding our case fatality rate since we, at the next slide, since we did have a one death reported in Brownsville.
Dr. Rodriguez, really briefly, before you go on, have we, we've been doing the swabs only for approximately about two weeks or more? Have we seen a higher positive rate since we went to swabs only? Overall percentage of positives that come back?
We actually do have that. We...
I've got the positivity rate, we've done, it has, we have seen an increase.
We have seen a slight increase of about 1.5%. We're looking at a graph on another computer. We have seen a slight increase. I won't give you the number just because the graph is small, but we have seen a slight increase in the positivity rate.
Okay, I kind of anticipated that because before I think we were at less than 10%. And now that we've gone to swabs, I think it's gone over 10% based on the amount of people that are getting tested. I could be wrong. I'm just doing basic math based on the number 2%.
Yeah, no, we're still running at a grand total of 6.22% positivity rate. But, but converting from a Sputum to a swab did, did improve that number 1.5%.
Can you, can you just send me, when you have a chance, the, the percentage of positives since we've gone to swab only, please?
Absolutely, sir.
I'm pretty sure it's more than 1.5% based on what I've seen.
Yeah, we'll, we'll share it with you. And we'll be...
And I want to give, I want to give Dr. Galen credit for that because she did push for the swabs based on the accuracy and the amount of tests we performed since, I think shows that the accuracy is a lot better on swabs. So I think we're getting more positives because of the accuracy and reliability of tests. So thank you, Dr. Galen.
Absolutely. But also keep in mind that as we go forward, we're loosening the restriction, the criteria to do testing. So, so that's, that's a good thing, means we're going to pick up more positives. It also means that in the beginning, when we were more restrictive, we may have missed some. So, you know, that's, that's going to influence the percentage as well as we move forward.
Correct. The takeaway point is that our positives are a truer positive and our negative is a truer negative, just by the method that we switched over. We may show more negatives, but that's just the, the population that we're getting that's being tested, and it's a larger proportion of that number.
All right. And then on this particular slide, I did get back with my contact...
Is there a difference in the cost for the two different tests?
No, sir.
The same? Okay. Because some people are going through their insurance. Are some people paying out of their pocket?
No, sir. The contract we have with a vendor does not add the copay amount.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. And so as I mentioned last week, I did get back with the DSHS to see if they were altering any of the estimated recoveries and the cumulative cases. So this is the updated version of, of those numbers. So you're, you saw just a little slight drop in some of the estimated recovery, but it wasn't very noticeable. It was just a couple of individuals. So, and that's with the updated version. I think they got back to me last Thursday. So I updated all the numbers with the new formulas. And then can we go to the next slide? And this right here is our daily case counts that we're receiving beginning March 21st. And now that we have had our first COVID death, I'm going to begin adding those to the charts also so that we can kind of see how those are progressing and what, what's going on within the community as it pertains to those to see if we need to make additional mitigation or change some of the strategies or, or what have you with some of the guidelines and guidances that are coming out from the CDC and from the Department of State Health Services. And then the next slide. And this is still the same, whether we're seeing them through community linked to previous case or travel, and we're still overwhelmingly, out of all of our cases, still seeing a link to previous cases, which is really what we want to do because that allows us to make sure that we are able to contain any outbreaks if we're seeing it within like family clusters or apartment clusters or, or something of that nature. We'll get a little more concerned if the community spread starts increasing. And I just wanted to let you know that since we've started the reopening process, we're monitoring a lot of these numbers a little more closely along with our case increases. So it's still early, but we're still seeing predominantly linked to previous cases, which is where we want to be right now. And then the next slide.
And then this is just a, an update on our numbers as to what age groups are being affected in Brownsville by cases categorized by their age groups. And, and I think the story here is fortunately, we're seeing that it's occurring a lot in our, both our 20, 30-year-olds, and, and these people are, are not necessarily requiring hospitalization, but tertiary care such as a prescription, fever, control methods and so forth, which is where you want to be on the side, on the side of this pandemic, this is where you want to be, where you're having resolution of the, of the flu-like symptoms very similar to, to if you were dealing with flu cases. Next slide. So the next part of this presentation is our COVID-19 boots-on-the-ground operations. We're at day 19. We continue citywide operations. We're finishing up South Most tomorrow. We'll be moving to a different section. But thus far, we had 18 door-to-door events over, we've had over 800 distributed today alone. And we did the Two Foot Banks last, last two weeks, and we've reached over 24% of households, which is, represents 12,340 households thus far. And we continue with the same number of staff participating, and we continue to add material. Today, I'm happy to report, we had local businesses donate reusable bags. I'm probably going to miss the name, but I'm going to say a few of the ones that came through, Autry's Pharmacy, Walmart, and... And we, we had a third vendor donate some reusable bags as well. But I think this is key because the community is coming together and donating these supplies. Brownsville PUB was actually that, our third individual who donated reusable bags. In addition, we had a pallet of PPE equipment donated this afternoon by Walmart. And right now, we're working with Walmart to distribute that, not only in the community, but to distribute to the nursing homes, and we're working on a strategy for that. Next slide. We want to thank you for your support and dedication. Any questions?
Dr. Rodriguez, are you able to quantify or have you been able to determine how many of those individuals that are getting the bags are actually participating in the drive-through testing or using any of the other services?
So one of the things that we're doing is, we're doing callbacks to addresses, and we're, we're looking at our symptoms by address, and then we're coming back and looking at the areas that, that we're, that we've been addressing. It, it's a moving target for us because some people will represent an address for purposes of insurance, but potentially the address may not pop up where we see some of the activity. So it's a moving target for us. But to answer your question in a very direct manner, the boots-on-the-ground has yielded more people calling our offices, asking for information.
And I know we had discussed doing a robocall for symptoms. Do you have any updates on that?
Yes, sir. I'm happy to report that Alibert Romero, our Communications Director, was able to get a BISD to use their database to do robocalls, and this process began on Friday of last week. So if you have not done a robocall yet through BISD, you will be getting a robocall soon.
One of the things, Dr. Art, that the mayor and I learned when we had our medical talk with some of the local doctors, is that this pandemic, the restrictions that we've had to impose are really affecting children that are within our community. And so my concern, one, I'm hearing that there are children within that have gotten ... Hearing that there are children that have gotten very, very sick from COVID and even needed hospitalization in our community. But is there anything else that the city can be doing to kind of, you know, just let parents educate, help educate parents and let them know, you know, new parenting advice and, and things, you know? I can even, because as a parent, it's so hard to raise kids who, you know, they don't always understand what's going on. We hope that the city would have a greater role in helping raise these kids.
But let me, I'm happy to report that from the Zika event that we had in 2016, one of the occurrences is we were able to get funded for a resiliency grant, and that grant was what put our epidemiologist in place through maternal child grant. So to your, answer your question, we actually are in a better position today because of the Zika efforts to, to be able to do outreach with pediatrics. And I'm actually going to ask Ms. Jones to kind of answer that question because we have already done some activity and continue to work through that.
Hello again. So one of the things that we were charged with, with the community, the Title V Healthy Texas Mothers and Babies Grant, was to build that community coalition. And so one of the things that I have done is I send out updates to that community coalition and ask them to disseminate that information. Also, I'm part of the community partners calls at the 11:30, which are now on Monday, Wednesday, Fridays. And so when new information comes about, especially with some of the new presentations with the Kawasaki and the Toxic Shock Syndrome, that it appears that might be affecting the younger children, we did put that out. And I do know that I'm also part of the Maternal Child Health Epidemiologist Subcommittee Group on the CSTE. And so they're trying to develop a case definition for some of the childhood illnesses associated with the COVID-19. And once those case definitions come and become finalized, we do expect that the CDC will look those over. And once that happens, DSHS will also get on board with that, and then we can start pushing it out in that particular manner. I'm also in the middle of acquiring practicum individuals from Texas A&amp;M right now, and they are going to be solely dedicated to the maternal and child health aspect because part of, since this is broken out, is I haven't been able to devote as much time to the maternal and child health aspect of it. And so I, I reached out and was like, we, I need some extra help on this particular aspect. And so we should finish up. We've gotten several resumes from some of the students, and that should begin, I think their work plans are due the 20th, and then we should be able to start them developing not only COVID-related, but also nutrition, parenting skills. And we're also in, and I should get approval from DSHS at the end of this week or the beginning of next week, where we have altered what we were originally going to do because we were going to do a community health worker and a dietitian. We're going to swap that over to an LVN. And we, once DSHS approves that, which I have been told verbally that it shouldn't be a problem, then we'll also have that nurse on hand so that way they can also help out with the COVID aspect, but also with the parenting aspect with our families. It's just, everything right now is probably a week or two away from being finalized and getting going full, full speed.
I'm glad to hear that because when we hosted our medical talk, that was the number one question coming in about kids and Kawasaki and all of these things. And we're so grateful we had Dr. Zemir, who gave us so much information and about continuing to, you know, 6 o'clock, 6:30 in the morning, get your kids up, get them showered, get them dressed, brush their teeth. And the most important thing is to have some sort of routine so these kids fall into the rhythm of that and not feel lost and lonely. And it was so scary to hear that children within Brownsville had had these, you know, issues with, you know, suicidal thoughts and things like that because this is such a shock to everybody to be, you know, in your home and in your room for so long. It's something that I'm really glad that we can have an open discussion with and maybe help some parents out there.
And I want to close by saying, so there's a good translation of how we take this and apply it. So the, as this material is available to us, we're actually going to insert this into our packages that we're doing out in the neighborhoods. So as the information is changing or being updated, we're flexible enough where we can change some of the material that's in the kit and update so to provide the latest information that's available. Thank you.
If I may add, this is Nerf, by the way. I would like to publicly thank the Public Health Department for the past three weeks concentrating on District 1 to disseminate all this information, which I think is very valuable to the citizens. I especially appreciate you allowing me to accompany you on these efforts. We've, we've covered so much ground in District 1 that I'm really appreciative. And I actually think that having the one, the personal contact with the people has been helpful. The robocalls might, might work too, but I'm glad that we did this first round, trying to actually have the face-to-face contact with people. Also, we covering the, or being present at the food giveaways at the South Most Library and at the Brownsville Event Center, I think was very helpful because you, once again, get an opportunity to talk to people individually and answer any questions that they might have. And today was a special day because we were accompanied by three promotoras. In the future, I think it would, or I would appreciate the opportunity to joint efforts with, have the Public Health Department join with a promotoras because they have a different touch. They do more work on the ground on a regular basis like the Public Health Department does, but they also have their own networks that they reach out to. And so if we could maybe in the future, especially in important situations like this, if we can work with the promotoras hand-in-hand, I think it'll be even more effective. So thank you very much, Public Health Department. I'm really impressed with the work that y'all have done.
Thank you.
I will always compliment the Public Health Department as well and remember as well that the Public Health Department has been working with the promotoras team and outreach team of the School of Public Health for many years, and they do a really good job, and they're used to that relationship, and our people benefit from it. On a different note, Art, I forgot to ask back when we were talking about testing. I noticed that the county was going to start mobile testing. And are we aware, have, have we had any contact with them to, to just kind of compare our criteria for testing with theirs and make sure it's in line?
No, they have communicated the testing sites and the fact that their campaign is going to be on weekends, but we have not reached out to them to see what their criteria for being tested is. But I certainly can reach out to them and, and see what is their intentions.
Yeah, I mean, not in a negative way, but just to see, are they, are they in line? Are we in line with them? We would want anybody that, that calls or, or logs in for testing to qualify for either site and not be excluded from one site or another. We would want anybody that calls or logs in for testing to qualify for either site and not be excluded from one site or another.
Absolutely. I will. That's a very good thought. Thank you. Mayor Commissioners, this concludes our report. Thank you for your thoughts.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez. Thank you, Ms. Jones. Fantastic.
Next we have item number two. Presentation impossible action on letter of support for grants submitted by the South Texas Astronomical Society. Known as STAR for the creation of Planetarium and Science Museum.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, I'm Victor de los Santos. Thank you guys for hosting us. With me here is Maria Jete. She is also part of the South Texas Astronomical Society with me. Just before we start really quick, I do want to clear up there was. The, for this action item, we are going to mention a planetarium and science museum, but. The main topic for this presentation is going to be more leaning towards a program that we are working with, with UTRGV. So would you mind if I share my screen to show the presentation?
I don't have an issue with that so long as the tech departments made sure that it's. It's okay for you to share and that we have sound when you do share.
Okay, I did not send this through the tech department.
You're available to share your screen.
Okay.
Just click on your name, Victor.
I got it. You guys see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, cool. Well, we'll go ahead and start. Thank you, Mayor and Amiru and the city commissioners and everybody on this call. For inviting us to the today's special meeting. The topic of this presentation is going to be possible support from the city of Brownsville for an NSF grant partnership that we are. Working on with UTRGV. We are going to present as the South Texas Astronomical Society or STARS. And we are also presenting on behalf of UTRGV. We are working with Dr. Mario Diaz from the university. He was not able to be on this call, but we are representing on his behalf. So here's the agenda. We're going to try to make this as quick as possible. First, we're going to give a, just a quick introduction for STARS. We are, for those who have not heard of us, I know a couple people on the call have, some might have not. Then we'll go ahead and get into the grant, just talk about some outcomes and we'll leave the floor open for any questions if there are any. So the South Texas Astronomical Society is a Brownsville community-based nonprofit. Focusing on space science, research, education and outreach. We've been. Working on things since the beginning of last year, so we created this little comprehensive timeline just to sum everything up. So we started towards the end of 2018, beginning of 2019, I met with Dr. Mario Diaz of UTRGV. And he introduced me to Carol Lutzinger, who is a BISD science curriculum specialist. With about a week and a half notice, we hosted an event for the Super Blood Wolf Moon at Pollam Elementary, where my mom is the principal. And it went really great. Over 400 students and parents showed up with very short notice on a Sunday night, on a school night at 10:00 PM. And not too long after that, Maria Jete, who's on this call, also joined and she helped us rebrand everything completely. So in July of last year, we hosted our first official inaugural event at the Resaca de la Palma State Park in North Brownsville. And we did that in collaboration with the Christina Torres Memorial Observatory. Where we celebrated the Apollo moon landing 50-year anniversary. Fast forward to February of this year and we, we held two events at the First Annual Crossroads Festival. We worked really closely with Amiru, who was great and helped us make our two events, the Space City Panel and Networking Mixer. A really great success and we also worked with BCIC and SpaceX. So between that timeframe, between July and February, we held over 20 events with our partner organizations that we've worked with. In the, in the, in the community and we'll talk more about why that's relevant a little bit later on. And also you guys, and some of you might have heard through NUDIF, but it wasn't until late March where we finally received. Nonprofit status and the only reason that that was, that we wanted to emphasize that is to highlight the fact that we, up until now. We had done all these events, 20-plus events with no outside funding. We did it all with the support of our community partners and these are all the ones that we've worked with. We work with the schools, UTRGV and TSE. We've hosted stargazing events at the state park and National Wildlife Refuge, Leguero Matasposa. We've had workshops and seminars at the libraries. We had public meetups at coffee shops and for the older crowd, we had stars on tap at Las Lamblas. So for all these, we've worked for either resources, content or just a venue. And so right now this is our board. We have seven board members with all different kinds of expertise. And two people on our advisory board. One of those people on our advisory board is Dr. Diaz, who, for the sake of the grant, I'll introduce him. Dr. Diaz is a professor of physics and astronomy at UTRGV. He is the director for the Center of Gravitational Wave Astronomy and the Christina Torres Memorial Observatory there at Resaca de la Palma. He doesn't usually like to brag, so he didn't really like this, but we thought that for the sake of, because of the kind of the size of this grant. We want to, we wanted to give a little, we wanted to note the credible awards that he's gotten. So he, he's gotten two very big awards for his work on gravitational wave astronomy at UTRGV. This year he received the Leopoldo Garcia Collin Medal Award for the discovery of gravitational waves and the support of Latin American scientists in that discipline. And he has also secured more than $30 million in funding total from National Science Foundation, NASA, the Air Force and private foundations. So now I'll talk a little bit about the grant that we would like to apply for. This grant is under NSF's program called the Improving Undergraduate STEM Education Hispanic Serving Institutions Program. The mission for this program under NSF is to enhance the quality of undergraduate STEM education at Hispanic serving institutions. And to increase retention and graduation rates. Of undergraduate students pursuing degrees in science, technology, engineering and math at Hispanic serving institutions. The specific part, the specific area that we would want to write our grant for is a priority area two. And it's called Innovative Cross-Sector Partnerships. The goal being to develop cross-sector partnerships that lead to increased student engagement. In STEM research and learning experiences while also generating knowledge about how cross-sector partnerships contribute to STEM teaching and learning. And workforce development. So with Dr. Diaz's credentials and his awards and his, all the research and experiments happening at UTRGV. And the, our, our experience working with Dr. Diaz and his groups and the community, we thought that working together. On this, it really, we thought that we could do something great here. The grant is for, it's a recurring grant for up to $2.5 million over five years. So that's about $500,000 a year. We don't have the, the exact programmer budget yet. Dr. Diaz is working on that with his team at the university. I know their goal is to use about $300,000 to $400,000 per year, not $500,000. So this is the logo for that, Improving Undergraduate STEM Education Program. So stakeholders, so for right now, we have a basic overview summary of what this program would be. Dr. Diaz called it BASE, the Brownsville Alliance for Science Education. Participating institutions right now would be UTRGV's Department of Physics and Astronomy. The Center for Gravitational Wave Astronomy, the CTM Observatory, which are all under Dr. Diaz. Texas Atmos College, the Brownsville Independent School District, Resaca de la Palma State Park, us at STARS and hopefully the city of Brownsville. So our summary is that we want to, we want to propose to create a partnership to support long-term transformation in science education in Brownsville and the RGV. Through this community-based effort. The core of the effort would be at the observatory at Resaca de la Palma State Park. But we also want to talk a little bit about the creation of a space science museum and planetarium for Brownsville. So the partnership would concentrate its efforts on training science teachers and instructors from BISD, TSE, UTRGV. And developing materials for those institutions. The goals for BASE would be to engage high school, TSE and general education, UTRGV students in hands-on inquiry-based astronomy and physics education. And to train high school teachers, TSE and UTRGV instructors in the utilization of that teaching methodology. Basically being very hands-on with the observatory. The end goal would be to have these instructors be able to lead. To lead instruction sessions at the observatory. Here's a little bit about that CTMO complex. It's a state-of-the-art facility. Right now there are 10 domes, one big one and nine smaller ones. With digital cameras. The end goal would be is to make all these completely robotic so that they are operated through the internet. At the CTMO happening right now, already for the past few years, students have been able to track asteroids, observe variable stars, observe exoplanets and study astronomical transients. Facility is also open to the public. It would provide opportunities for informal astronomy education. Promote the state park itself and be a true environmental jewel for the community. So for high school teacher training, Dr. Diaz and his groups have actually had high school physics and astronomy training for teachers from BISD and San Benito ISD. At the, at the facility in the past. The next step in the goal is to be able to have everything be robotic so that. Teaching and instruction can happen from a classroom, from a computer. You can. You can control these domes and the telescopes remotely. So when I first met Dr. Diaz back in December 2018, right away he, we started talking about. This vision to, I went to him because I wanted to help with outreach and he said, yeah, that's great. Let's start. And we had this vision for a future space science institute, which included a planetarium. And also includes exhibits around physical science principles, NASA missions, LIGO and the discovery of gravitational waves. And just prove that, show that Brownsville has a part in the history of these different organizations and sciences. And so looking ahead, we, the starting facilitation for this program would be at. At the state park and where the observatory is at and possibly even at UTRGV. But for the future, we would like to have a space science institute and planetarium. In the downtown Middie Cultural District area to be a museum-style showcase for local space science development that would also tie it into. The, to the mainstream science that you usually see at museums. And also be a training facility that would be a home for this program that we, that we mentioned. Because the program is, we're expecting it to grow and eventually require its own home. So what we're asking for right now is the city of Brownsville's support and endorsement in a, in a letter of support and the reason that. That is due this week is because UTRGV can only submit one, there can only be one submission for the grants per institution. So UTRGV created their own deadline and that is by this week for just a short two-page proposal. And we would love to be able to add the city of Brownsville's support for that. September is when the grant application for NSF is actually due. And so for September, what we would like is to continue the discussion and hopefully have. A dedicated space for the program, a home for a planetarium and science institute museum that we would help bring here. And work with local scientists and the community to put together. Preferably in the, in the Middie Cultural District, Brownsville downtown area. And to just have all the, to formalize and strengthen the partnerships that are going to be essential to the program. So the outcomes for all this, outcomes for Brownsville is we believe that this aligns with the long-term educational and cross-institutional goals. We would like to provide the community access to higher education through the university. We empower educators by bringing additional STEM resources and opportunities into the classroom and beyond that. Broaden the economic, local, the local economic outlook for Brownsville because more STEM. Education means better jobs and that means money back into the community. And like we said in Crossroads this year, we want to promote Brownsville as the space city that it's slowly becoming. And promote it as a hub for science and space tourism. And that is the end of the presentation. Are there any questions?
Victor, I have a question. I think it's wonderful and you definitely have my support. With respect to the planetarium or the museum that you talk about in Middie. Do you mean that you are looking for a dedicated piece of land in the district or are you actually looking for a building?
For the museum, we would, we would like a building. For right now though, we. Just a land would work. We actually have been having discussions recently and things have been, in some aspects, things have been moving faster than others and. It's actually, we've found that it's very possible to get a planetarium down here. So a planetarium would just require a land and we could even begin instruction in the planetarium and begin operations on that planetarium. Throwing shows there before the science museum, even before we even have a building for the science museum. The end goal, of course, we would like to have a science museum with that planetarium, but for right now, either would work.
But the letter for the grant, the grant itself does not cover the cost of building a planetarium. Am I right?
No, no, we are not saying, no, no, the grant is just, I'm sorry, the letter of support would just be for, for the grant and that. The city of Brownsville would be a partner and that we will continue discussion on, on looking for a home for the program.
Okay, thank you.
So Victor, just to clarify though, you're only asking us for the letter of support at this point because I.
Correct.
Okay, because I don't have an issue with that, but if you're asking for land or building, then that's going to be a different conversation. Right?
Yeah, of course. We want to.
That's going to cost some sort of money, so I'm not prepared to agree to that at this point, but letter of support, I don't see an issue with that whatsoever.
And I would have to agree with the mayor. I think this is a wonderful idea. I also agree with Dr. Gallin. This is a project that, as some people might remember, we worked up with the other commission on, these were really ideas that we wanted to get off the ground because we felt that. With the arrival of SpaceX that we had to do something for the community to help. You know, just show people what exists in our backyard and how amazing SpaceX, all of the things that they're doing are. And on that note, to remind everybody that. We are only a space city day by day because SpaceX is in our backyard and have you reached out to them? Do they have any involvement or any input in these ideas?
We worked with them briefly for, for the Crossroads, for the Crossroads panel, they had that Starship presentation before we talked. And then at the Networking Mixer, they supplied merchandise for us to give out. We haven't talked to them directly about this. Our stance though, at, at the Space City events. That we held at Crossroads, our stance was that we do think that Brownsville has the potential to be a space city and not, not even just because of SpaceX, but because of. even just because of SpaceX, but because of, there is a university full of astrophysicists, and we have an observatory, and the research that they do is really great. And so since the start of this organization, our goal has been, even before SpaceX, to show the community what they have to offer. And so we think that, yes, SpaceX is doing a great job to have the whole world looking at Brownsville for space, but we think that in order to get, to get, to reach our goal of having our community be a part of that, we need to, in, not, not just show off that we have SpaceX, but engrave the astrophysics and space science research already going on at the university and show, and start that interest from the K through 12 level so that they could grow into, so that our community can grow into the programs that the university has to offer, and then eventually be a part of SpaceX and all the other space tech companies that might be living here in 10, 20 years.
So, may I just say a few words? I just wanted to say that it's really a no-brainer. Of course, we would want to reach out to them. It's a, but we have to have something to go there with, and also, we need time to develop relationships here and to do things right now with the community so that we can integrate all of this and bring it all together. And for us to be a space city, I think it's a no-brainer that we need to have a home for such, you know, institutional research and also development of everything that's happening. There needs to be a hub for that. And if we can find a home, that's a long-term goal. But the first priority is to educate, enlighten, and just inform people and involve them of what's happening in the community right now. There's some amazing things happening on, in, on many levels, both research and practical levels.
Yeah, we definitely are. The end goal would be to, to work with SpaceX. That would be great, but I think that we've seen that they don't respond very well to ideas, and so we really want to provide them concrete evidence that Brownsville has the potential to be a part of that, that space community on our own so that they can help with that and not build it alone.
I like that, Victor. So what is the total amount of the grant?
The total amount of the grant is up to $2.5 million over five years, so that's about $500,000 per year. But from what I've, Dr. Diaz is still putting together the final budget for that, and I, the last I heard him say was that he was going to try to make the program about $300,000 per year.
And, and are you anticipating constructing that little observatory cluster there out of that grant?
No, that is, that is purely Dr. Diaz. He actually, that is already constructed. If you go over to Resaca de la Palma, right there, you will see one big dome and nine small domes around it that are already up, and he has been getting his own grants, I think from NASA and the NSF, to get the, that work done there. That's the only thing this grant would be for, is for the program to train high school teachers.
I didn't realize it was that big. That's great. So...
Yeah, that, it's relatively new.
That's nice. Okay. Thank you, and good luck with this.
Thank you.
Oh, I would just have to say that, going back to what we said, that SpaceX doesn't, I mean, you said that SpaceX doesn't respond well to ideas, and I would just have to say that, in my experience, that's not true, because I'm the city commissioner, the girl that traveled coast to coast begging them to come here, and eventually, they did. So I just want to say that they're a wonderful company. They're wonderful to work with. We are so lucky to have them in our backyard. They've done so much. They have contributed to our museums, to our schools, to our STEM programs, to our universities. So...
I think he was trying to reach aspirations to approach them is what his point was. I don't think he's derogating them in any way.
Oh, yeah, definitely not, no.
I'm, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve this, what are we doing? A support, the support.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second to sign on to the letter of support. Is there any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. And Commissioner Goloski, did you vote on this?
I did.
Okay, because you're a board member. I just didn't know if there was any sort of issue with that.
I asked actually the city attorney, and he informed me that there's no conflict because there are other situations where, where a city commissioner will be on the board of an organization.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, just for you, just for you.
Yes, and just for the record, we did give that advice, and also, if issues come up where there may be a conflict, as to specific items, you can always recuse at that.
Sure, okay. Thank you, counsel. Motion.
Thank you very much. I'll move to adjourn. Second.
We have a motion to adjourn in a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, we stand adjourned. Thank you.